Calling the Wichita Board of Education Special Meeting to order for November 21st, 2022. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of our choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. I want to share with the public that we will conduct this very important superintendent search with all due diligence and with fairness, and we will include the public at every single turn that we can. I want you also know that this board is taking this task very seriously, and it will dominate our time until we complete this task. We encourage your feedback at all turns of this search. And while we will seriously miss Dr. Thompson, we also understand that our focus from this meeting on will be to fill these very important shoes. So, thank you for joining us today. Patrick, first item, please.
First item, public communications?
I don't see anyone in the audience for this particular, I'm sure we will have public communications for various other meetings we have, but since this was the very first step, we understand, I do not see anyone in the audience for public communications, but let me just ask if there is anyone. If not, we'll move on to the next item. Patrick?
Next item, executive session.
Julie?
I move the board recess into executive session to discuss compensation for non-elected personnel pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 4:25 PM.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. We will be back at 4:25. The first executive session is over. We are going to extend that particular executive session, though, another 30 minutes and return at 4:55, and that's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Voting yes, Hazel, Julie, Stan, and Ernestine. We'll be back at 4:55. Session is reconvening from executive session, no action necessary. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under operations, superintendent search.
Tonight, we have with us, to facilitate this discussion, Wendy Johnson and Sean Huspeth, and I will turn it over to them. They will introduce us to our new friends of Ray and Associates, and we will discuss a timeline that we are working on for this superintendent search. And actually, did I get ahead of Sean and Wendy? Okay. Again, we are returning from executive session, no action necessary taken. We are going to now, under operations, discuss our superintendent search, and I will turn it over to Sean and Wendy to introduce this topic about the proposed timeline.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sean Huspeth, Chief Human Resource Officer. Privileged to be with you today. So, what I'd like to do is introduce the two consultants that have come in, based on a prior board meeting where you approved an external search firm to assist us and aid us in the process of looking for our new district leader and a superintendent for the 23-24 school year. In that process, you had approved the firm of Ray and Associates, and I'd like to introduce today Mr. Michael Collins and Mr. David Faltis, who are here to present kind of a timeline that we have prepared for all of you, and just kind of give you some guidance as to what the next few months is going to look like as we begin this path to engage in the search process. So, Mr. Reeser, if it's okay with you, I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Collins first to the podium to present that timeline, and then they are available for questions from the board as we go through this and work out any adjustments or changes that you all feel is needed. So, Mr. Collins?
Welcome, Mr. Collins.
Thank you. As others will lift the microphone up, I will always need to push it down. It's a pleasure to be with you. Thank you for the honor and privilege of not only being with you tonight, but of having the privilege to offer guidance and consultation to this very important process, which you will do exceedingly well, but we would like to be an asset to your good work. I also want to say that to the community at large and to the board itself, the other thing that we hope comes out of this kind of work, one is particularly within the community is that we often find that this entire process of finding another leader, or your next leader, can have an opportunity to build a sense of cohesion throughout the community in terms of arriving at a decision, because they're going to have opportunities to participate as well. And you have made a very sound commitment as a board to not only acknowledge, but request, engage, and listen to the input that you're going to get from the public. So, we hope that builds a sense of cohesion between the board and the public. And then secondarily is that we actually work hard to see that this effort, this most important, you know, important execution of responsibility helps you to continue to strengthen and become even a more cohesive board than you might already be. So, we will be hopeful that those would be two ancillary benefits that come out of this in addition to finding and selecting your new leader. Right now, if you would, our first topic to go over and discuss, and as David, as we asked David to share his thoughts at times, I'm just going to move over. We can't find an easier way to do that right now, so. But if you could turn your attention to the timeline which you have in your possession, it actually is two timelines for the sake of the audience, and that is that the first timeline will take you through your search of internal candidates, and at such time as you'll make a determination of whether there is or one is selected to be your next leader. That's what you said in your last meeting. And/or if that's not the case, and you now want to open it up to an external search as well, then we would commence at that time when you make that decision. Therefore, the timelines have two ending points. These are, we adhere to these timelines pretty faithfully. So, yeah, is there a weak wiggle room? Probably. I mean, extenuating circumstances would change that, but without extenuating circumstances. So, as you noticed, then one calls for the conclusion of the internal search process right around the very end of February, beginning of March. If one is not selected, or you want to continue, you will then want to perceive that external look, even whether the internal applies for that process as well, then we need to go through the process of reopening the search for externally, and that wouldn't include till around the end of April, beginning of May. That's what's suggested in the timelines. Now, keep in mind, the good news is there are many things that are going to get accomplished that affect all of the above. So, it's not like you're starting and stopping one, and you have to do all this other background. So, everything that we're doing here this evening will apply to both, for example. There will be a number of other things. When we come back in January and do your stakeholder meetings, those will apply to both, and those are very time-consuming. They're time-consuming from the identification of the list of those that should be invited, as well as the actual execution takes two to three days, depending on meeting schedules and so forth. Then we have to go back and do a very quick analysis of what those said, et cetera. So, all those will be completed. So, if at some point in February, you decide that you would like to open it up externally, because that's about, in that timeframe is when that will occur, then what will happen is that then we would open it an external, and the biggest time lag in that is the opening of the application, which is a 45-day opening process, which I don't think you want a short change, because I think you want that net cast as wide as possible. You'll have to excuse me, I have a sinus infection.
You're fine.
And that medication's not quite as good as I would hope it was going to be. And I sound much worse than I feel, so. So, when that opens, we then would open up the external process 45 days, and then we need to go through the screening process, which moves quite rapidly, actually, once we get through there. In both cases, in addition to all the work that will be done leading up to the actual interviewing of the internals, the other things that will occur is that at least with the internals, any background information and check and work we would do would occur then. Any interview of the candidate, of their references and so forth internally will all be taken care of. That won't have to be repeated for them if they were to apply again. So, we're just trying to, we're trying to marry this as closely as we can in a hand-and-gloved relationship, based on what your requests were. So, you have before you two timelines. I would hope that you have, and it's always hard with a board, because you all have real lives, real jobs, and real other things to do in most cases, so that if you could either adopt it tonight, or very, very quickly come back and say, "We all looked at our calendars, and we need to change this one thing," or "We need to move it from a Tuesday to a Thursday." But I would also ask, you know, that you make sure that it's, you look at other calendars so that they're not interfering as much as you can. I think it's extremely important that all board members are present throughout this process. So, it's up to you if you feel you've had this timeline, if you feel you're ready to adopt it and say, "Go ahead, and we have to make a change." We make a change? You know, we didn't hammer this into a rock of granite, so it has flexibility. Or if you say, "Hey, can we have till after Thanksgiving?" We'll go back to you the week after Thanksgiving. That's your call, Mr. President.
And, Mr. Collins, Michael Collins, if we make, take action tonight, just for the sake of the public, when will that job be advertised? When would be the first day it'd be advertised?
None of this is going to happen till the stakeholder groups are done in January. So, the first time, basically, that it would be open, we would open the application for the internal, we will open it on the 24th of January.
Okay.
If you go, if you go and decide to include the external, then that, then that'll open, actually, immediately on 3/1, or the minute, or for some reason, you tell us on February 20th, we'll open it that week for the external.
So, the basic guideline is after tonight, we will work on the job description, and then in January, we will work on stakeholder meetings, conclude that with the official advertisement of the job, and then decide at a further date whether or not internal, if we want to shift from internal to external.
It was, that we were going to have the stakeholders between now and January?
That's what I was going to.
Currently, sorry, currently, we show those on the week of January 16th, where we do two or three days, depending on the numbers. We would put the online survey link, if we can get that finalized, then we would do that on or about December 1st, and then that would be available until January 22nd. So, it would be out there, particularly over the break, but then when we start advertising, or we start talking again about those constituent groups, they'll still have an opportunity to go back and take that survey through January 22nd.
Diane?
When I'm looking at the meetings for the constituents and the stakeholder groups, we've got January 16th through the 20th, that week, but then that following Monday, it's the board to finalize the profile, so it doesn't seem like there's a lot of time between the meetings and to finalize that profile. I'm sorry, what?
So, what's going to happen? We are now in the process of interviewing each of you as board members individually between, one's already been done, and by the end of next week, they'll all be done. Secondly is, the survey opens, and this, remember, it's 31 qualities, of which you pick 10 that you feel are most important, and this is for the entire community of Wichita, whether you're a student, whether you're a senior citizen, whether you work for the district, whether you work somewhere else, whether you're a parent, an interested community member, taxpayer, we're going to urge everybody to take the survey all along. So, that'll be going on. So, what'll happen is that, so you'll have the survey going on. We'll do these stakeholder meetings during that time. We take back, in the stakeholder meetings, every group, it's eight questions. It lasts 45 minutes. We come here and do these, or some will be done online, or a combination thereof. And that's really guided by what gets, what you anticipate to have the largest number of participation. We'll do it either way, both ways, et cetera. Then we take that, and in very short order, like 48 hours, we will turn those around and present, because we will have the data on the survey, which is basically, it becomes a spreadsheet that shows students, these are their preferences, teachers, these preferences, classified, these preferences, principals, administrators, parents, community non-parents, et cetera. And then, and then there'll be this side of recommended and considered, based on what the numbers say. So, you take that, and then you take the themes that come out of your individual interviews, that'll be a theme for the whole board, it won't be individual, and then the themes that come out of these focus groups, and those are lined up or compared with what the survey says, we'll make alterations to the survey results based on that input. So, that's how you can do it, that way. It'll happen the next week.
Diane, I think the, correct me if I misunderstood your question. I think you're thinking maybe the stakeholder meetings would begin the process, but it's actually going to start in the survey that's available to everybody in December.
Right.
Because you're right, that if you take the turnover from the stakeholder meetings to the actual job description, that's a short time period, but that process actually starts in December with the survey, online surveys.
So, just for clarification, the survey is going to be the 31 qualities that the Ray and Associates survey has put together? Okay.
That's correct.
So.
And so, I understand, I see where you're thinking the dates don't quite connect, because you see the promotional flyer due on the 19th, and I think you have a board meeting on or about that date.
Correct.
But if you look down a couple of dates, that's when we start saying, "This is what it's going to look like." But as we start to get the data from those surveys that are still open until the 22nd, then you see on the 23rd is when we'll finalize that, which means we'll have to have a workshop or a virtual board meeting or something to finalize to get down to kind of the fine, you know, details of what's going to be listed on that promotional flyer. But generally speaking, they probably already have in mind what it's going to look like, and here's what we're going to be, here's our best foot forward. What we'll be asking for is, once that survey closes, we'll be able to show you, as Michael said, here what the different groups consider, and here's what we would consider our top 10, based on kind of cross-tabbing those survey results. But you may say, as a board, they, we like those, but we kind of like this one down here as well, and that's what we will decide on or about that 23rd, in that same section about the profile development.
Hang on one second, Kathy. I want to give Diane a chance to, did you have a follow-up on that, Diane?
At the moment, no.
Okay. Kathy? And then Cheryl, and then Hazel?
How are you going to communicate to these different groups of people, and how can we be certain that they're going to respond to these surveys?
We'll be using your kind of typical ways to communicate with your community and other groups. If they get an email from David with Ray and Associates, they're probably going to go, eh. But if they get it from the district, very important information, and again, there will be, I'm sure, multiple opportunities where that will come to them as we begin to look at your stakeholder groups. Again, the district will communicate with them on, you know, on this day and time, you'll have an opportunity, for some reason, you can't be here. Here, again, is the survey link, we want your feedback, if you will.
Because of the response, or the lack of response in the past with our surveys, I'm concerned that we're not going to get a wide variety of input.
Sure.
And I don't know what we can do to combat that.
I mean, I think that's going to be all of us.
All of us, okay.
You know, doing everything you can, whether it's on your social media, or on the district's social media, or through your email, or constant contact, whatever type of messaging system you have.
Perhaps local TV stations can also help us out.
Yes.
Okay.
That would be, that would be the hope. But again, as you've stated, you know, sometimes they get busy, they don't notice it, they don't think it's for them, and this is obviously the biggest decision you'll make as a board here, you know, probably for the next several years, hopefully, and so hopefully, we can get that information out in the urgency through the standard channels as well as your board channels.
And I think you'll find, Kathy, that in the past, when we've done survey, based off the importance of the topic, sometimes you get less-than-stellar responses, but on all of the big surveys we've ever done, our responses on those surveys have been excellent to above-excellent.
Great.
So, I don't suspect that we'll have any problem with getting a great turnout on those surveys.
That's the hope.
Cheryl?
And it's kind of addressing what you just asked. Part of the way that we can not only, because we'll not only be doing the survey, we will also, you will be doing the constituent and stakeholder group meetings. So, specific groups will be invited to actually provide feedback in those groups, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
My question is, and it's kind of in the terms of, we're finalizing the superintendent profile on the 23rd of January, and on the 24th, we're opening applications. I would assume that any internal candidate is going to want to know what that survey result is as they do their application, so that they are preparing to be able to respond to the things that we believe are important as a district. Will that give, and then it's only open seven days. Does that give them enough time? The deadline for applications is the 31st of January.
I believe that it will, because if I'm an internal applicant, I'm pretty engaged in this process already, as far as being pretty tuned in, and once we finalize that on the 23rd, we'll turn around and start getting that information out there as soon as possible.
So, they could apply and then continue to prepare based on what the survey is?
Absolutely. Or they could amend their application as well.
My second question on that, and that is on the external search, because that same timeline is different. On March the 1st, they apply with online applications, and they've got until April the 2nd, which is a little over a month.
Yes.
To get the, to meet the deadline.
Yes.
Is that normal to have a short timeline for internal and a longer one for external?
I don't know that it's normal to, I'll say, it's difficult to say, because we don't always do the split application like this. It's typical to do at minimum a 30-day posting. We'd always like 45 days, although it can go a little stale, if you will. So, at 30 days for a national or regional search, I think, is the appropriate amount of time. Internally, again, I think you, if you have internal applicants, we would believe that they've been thinking about this, they've been talking to people in the district, leadership in the district, they're prepared, whereas someone in, you know, Texas, may not realize this is an opportunity until they see it on their either weekly job posting that they get from AAAS or some other, you know, posting warehouse, if you will. And so, we think that 30 days is the appropriate time.
And that gives them additional time to research the district, to determine if they're interested in doing an application.
And if it's a fit, correct.
Okay.
If they are a fit.
And basically, between the internal and the external, our internal kind of finishes the end of February, and if we don't feel like we've found the right candidate yet, then we open up the whole thing, and it kind of runs parallel with what you're doing with the exception of that one timeline piece, but it starts March 1 and would run through May?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Hazel?
And Cheryl actually asked the questions that I was going to ask. The only thing is, I would also like to say that how important I think that is to get the word out and continue to get the word out, not just one time, because we've had complaints in the past that people don't know about until it's over, or they haven't had enough time to respond. So, I would hope that during that time, that we would make a continual request for every, you know, people to respond to that survey.
We would agree, and one of our team members who's not here this evening is our full-time staffer in our offices will be in communication with your staff here, whether encouraging or, "Hey, where'd you post it? Can I see? Have you tried this? Have you tried that?" Just where they're working together to make sure that we get it out there as much and as often as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Last, I mean, obviously, the last thing you'd want is to miss an incredible candidate because they didn't see it by the deadline of the timeline.
Diane?
Can you paint me a picture of what the stakeholder group meetings will look like?
Sure. If we do them in person, and by now, most stakeholder groups are in person, we would be inviting them to a common location, if you will, and I or Michael or somebody else on our team would be working through about eight questions that we'd be asking about strengths of the district, weaknesses, things that you would like the board to ask of the candidates. And generally speaking, you would have either me and a scribe kind of taking notes, or I've done it where I've actually taken notes on a laptop while I'm having those conversations. If it's 20 to 30, we've done, I've done them with as many as 85 or 90 people in the room, and obviously, they can take a little longer to get everybody's thoughts in. Sometimes we'll have them, you know, pass notes, if you will. We always tell them, "If you're uncomfortable," because depending on the setting, some people aren't going to raise their hand and say, "I think the superintendent needs to do this or that." You know, we'll make ourselves available after the meetings come up and give that conversation. But we try to have it be in an open conversation, where we share a little bit about the profile, and then it's kind of a conversation where we ask the question, "Hey, what are some great things about the district?" And generally, as the old middle school teacher would say, they would popcorn, you know, those answers come to you. If there's a, sometimes a topic may be a little more serious of, "Is there someone that you would recommend, right, that you think we should really go after?" Maybe you've met them at a conference, or they're in a neighboring district, or you worked for them in the past. Sometimes those conversations come a little more privately, whether it's with a note to me afterwards, if that makes sense.
What other point? Actually, we share our email address. There's two questions that are really hard to answer while you sit there at that moment in a 45-minute focus group. One is, "Do you have any suggestions for questions that you would like us to bring to the board to be considered for interview questions? And/or is there anybody out there that you would like to have us reach out to, to see if they're interested in the position?" They're never told they're recommended. That's what I want to clear. They're only told their name surfaced in a focus group, here's the link, here's where the position is listed, here's where the profile and the digital brochure are, et cetera, to see if they're interested in applying. Those two, we actually give them a little time, because they have time when the application's open, to send us that information, because that's really hard, right there, come up with somebody. And then, and then if they have questions throughout the process while it's going on, "Hey," you know, it's like, "Hey, David, I thought you said the process was going to do this, I don't see this on the website, or it looks a little different, can you explain it?" We can do that. So, they have an opportunity then to maintain contact with us, and we take full responsibility for that communication. The only other footnote I want to point out, Kathy, is your idea of, "Well, we may have to have the media say something." Well, there's nothing better, and I know that Wendy knows this stuff better, forgotten more about this stuff than I know, but it's happened. There's nothing better than when the anchor who says not only, "Hey, remember, there's a survey," they start to chatter. "Hey, I took that survey today to their other reporting mate. It was a little hard, but it's really good." That seals the deal. And then they say, "Now, please join me and take the survey." So, you plant all of those kinds of seeds as part of outreach, so. But in terms of the other one, it's just eight questions, everybody gets the same questions. There's a lot of ethics in this that follow, you know, HR ethics, you got to do this for this, you got to do the same thing for everybody, et cetera.
Diane, you still have the floor.
How many stakeholder meetings are we planning to have?
That's up to you. Typically, a district this size has typically anywhere from 12 to 16, 18 would be typical.
So, all in that one week of the 16th?
Oh, yeah, we'll do them all in two days if necessary.
So, 12 to 18 stakeholder meetings?
Yeah, that's typical for a district of this size and scope.
Cheryl, do you want to compare that?
Because we have to remember, we could be doing them at the same time. They could be different groups. They could be different groups, we could do them at the same time.
Okay, very good. And then I do have one more question. Typically, for a school district our size, how many applicants are there? A little pop quiz.
Let me look at my crystal ball. I'll tell you what we're getting now, we used to get 50 to 60. We're now getting 30 to 40.
50 to 60, and now we're getting 30 to 40?
30 to 40, you know, since the pandemic started, it's pretty consistent. I would say that's, we'd like to come back with a surprise. But the old expression is, we don't want to write checks with our mouth that our pocketbooks can't cash. Okay, so 30 to 40 is what our average has been lately.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And I was just going, Cheryl, how does that stakeholder meeting schedule compared to the last time we did a superintendent search? Is that comparable, or are we trying to put too much in one short time, or is it about the same?
I think it's very comparable. There may not have been quite as many stakeholder meetings, but we tried to move them out across the city in different locations. We included both internal people and external people and groups. And we always made all of them open to the public, so anyone could attend, even if they didn't particularly belong to a specific group. But, you know, we had input into particularly our community groups that were invited.
And I think one thing that I would like the public to understand, too, is that the official survey and the official stakeholder meetings, there are a million ways to participate in this process this time. So even if you choose not to officially do it that way, every little input, no matter how you choose to make it, will be, obviously gets thrown into the whole theme of our search for a superintendent. Because I know I've already been, I know I've already been receiving communications from various people in the community. Cheryl?
I don't want to stop discussion, so if there's still discussion, but I'd like to put a motion on the table that we accept both the internal and the external timelines.
I have a second.
Diane?
I have a question.
Yep.
And does that still allow flexibility to adjust the timelines if we see fit?
I think we, I can include that in my motion, because who knows what might happen? And we may say we're going to do it on January the 24th, but we have a 15-inch snowstorm that day, and the consultants can't get in or whatever. So we need some flexibility, but within the range of what the timeline is.
Yeah, I'd just like to make sure that we have some reasonable flexibility for this timeline.
I think we always try to build in that flexible, reasonable flexibility, because Cheryl's correct, there'll be things that come up even after tonight and before our next meeting. But we do have, we are always leaving on the option, leaving on the floor the option of having some workshops and some maybe more special meetings if we need to. So if we get to the point where you feel like you need to make a motion to adjust the timeline, you will definitely have that opportunity. Ernestine, did you raise your hand, or you just, okay. Okay, with any other discussion on that motion? We do have a motion on the floor to adopt the two timelines set out by Ray and Associates. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. I'm going to kind of go down our tick list, if you will. Some of it's informational, so it should go rather quickly. So when we present your 31 qualities, okay, what we have been doing, well, we've been doing it for a long time, because the pandemic started a long time ago, but we recommend this. We don't believe, somebody can come if you'd like us to. We believe that may be an unnecessary expense. It's something you can do on Zoom. And I just, we just want to double-check that you're comfortable with that, you know, some of these things being done efficiently and economically for your sake. So when we bring in the 39 qualities, as well as the report on the summation of the focus groups and so forth, we recommend that we do that on Zoom and not in person, okay? Next is, and this one's really important for the engagement of your community. We've done the survey, or presented the survey, in up to 23 languages. So what we need is from you. We don't need it tonight, but we need it real soon. Remember, this thing opens December 1st. What other languages would you like considered? Would you like the 31-quality survey to appear in for people in your community? I mean, one's quite obvious, given what we know of your makeup, but are there others? Go ahead, yes, Ernestine?
You mean, we can come up with ideas in addition to those that we might think are needed?
Yeah, based on your student or family population, languages. Based on your family population, given your makeup in this community, Spanish isn't obvious, okay? But what other ones are, we're not sure of what those are. So if you wanted something else besides English and Spanish, would you please share with us?
Cheryl?
I think our district sends out things in Spanish, English, Spanish, and Vietnamese, is that correct?
That's fine.
And there are probably two or three others.
Yeah.
So we probably just need to match to what our district currently does.
Yeah, whatever you're doing, but we don't know what the other ones are. So we just need to be told before the 1st, so we can do that.
Yeah, if you get with our staff, our staff knows the three to five languages that we make sure that gets presented out to our community.
Right. And then this is informational, but what was talked about before in your last meeting, and we've at least discussed internally here, is that there will be a second round of opportunity for the community to be engaged with finalists, okay? Particularly if you go external. You have to decide if you want to do that internally. And we will facilitate that. That's where we, you're not going to take 16 groups, we're going to shrink them. But we're going to probably put them into a group total of five or six total. But we will construct a questionnaire with input from these groups. And we will facilitate an actual meeting with candidate A, candidate B, and candidate C, with people watching from those groups. And we will ask the question, they will respond, these take about 45 minutes. And then the way you have input as a community is, we have online, you're given a link if you're participating. Or you can make it open to the whole community, but they have to watch it. Otherwise, it doesn't mean anything. That's why they have to watch it to get the link. Then they actually, what happens is, they go online and there's an impression form, it's a SurveyMonkey format, but it's got 10 criteria. And you rank the criteria one to five. So candidate A, on criteria one, you give them a 1, 2, 3, or 5. On criteria two, you give them a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, et cetera. And then you do the same thing for candidate B, and the same thing for candidate C, as they come up. Now, what we do with that is, we take the results of that and we graph and chart it for you. Meanwhile, you will have done your final interviews of these finalists. And you have said that you won't make a decision until we present you with these impressions, the results of the impression forms. The other real bonus of these impression forms is there's a comment section that's open. We'll combine all that for you, but where that really has value is not then. The charts and graphs have value then on the impressions. That has great value to you in the next six months to a year, is to find those comments. Where they are typically used is where people are refining strategic plans. There's something that you, as a board, could look at and go, aha, I guess, look at the number, you know, there seems to be a lot of these around this topic, we should make sure we pay attention going forward. You give it to your new selectee, because it becomes an interesting guide for things for them. So that's kind of that bonus side of that where it's open. So the community has input now on the front end, and legitimate input on the back end. So I just wanted to share that input opportunity. We already know, and I want to tell you, and I'm not trying to embarrass them, I won't apologize if I do. Sorry, Sean and Wendy. But it is an absolute pleasure to work with Sean and Wendy. They're on the spot, everything's right on target, right on time. And we're delighted to have that opportunity and hope to continue to do that. I do have the board contact person at this point, as you stand as the president, if that's, we've got to confirm that. So we always have an external relationship, and we have an internal. And right now, we have both of those covered. So I thank you for that. You have an online, you're going to have, there's this online application that people have to fill out. They already have it. They're going to look at it from their HR policy and practice, and they're going to share it with your general counsel. Because we just want to make sure there isn't some law in Kansas that spots something that appears on that application that's inappropriate, or not legal, or doesn't fit one of your policies. So I just want to share with you, that's underway, and as soon as we get a green light, that'll be ready to go. The next one is approval of advertisements. Do they have the advertisements, or are you doing that? Okay, so they're going to cover the approval, but let me give you a thumbnail sketch. So there are, we have a list, I think the list has got 20-some opportunities in it. We have a recommendation of about, total of about seven. And this is based on return on investment, like, all throughout time. So one of them is for AAAS, which is the Superintendent, National Superintendent Association. Excuse me, and they have a package, costs $600. That's the largest expenditure. Education Week costs $400, that's in our fee already. So that's one that we pay for automatically. It's the largest overall print and digital communication arm in all of public education. It's just that Education Week has a lot, the majority are teachers and so forth, so that may not totally fit. But we take care of all that. Then there's going to be ALIS, which is basically the Latina superintendents and administrators organization, and it's their communication piece, it's about 300. You have the same thing for NABZI, which is National Association of Black Educational Leaders, same type of thing. So that's what you get. When you total all those up, that we recommend it's about $1,500. And we were going to work with Sean and Wendy on that, but I just want you to know that that's there, because it's an expenditure.
And that's if it shifts to external search.
Correct, correct. But as opposed to trying to remember to go back, I just wanted to present it all right.
I appreciate that.
And then, as we've been informed, actually, it's interesting because states are so different. So in Kansas, you actually don't have a separate superintendent's license. You have an administrator's license, which they have to have. But you don't have a separate superintendent's license. So that kind of takes care of that in this case. And then, is the, and this is when we get to external, that is, the board, we can come back to this. The board willing to offer a contract to a finalist that would need to do some things to obtain this administrator license. I don't need, if you open it up, we're going to have that conversation. Because you do have a law in here that allows them X amount of time to get it. And you're still allowed to make an offer as long as they meet whatever this deadline is. And it's actually in statute and state law. So we'll come back to that. So the last piece we have, David, actually is, Mr. President, is you need to set a salary for the position, or arrange a salary range in the position, which is typically what we recommend to give you more flexibility. And as you know, we have presented you with information related to counterpart out of the Council of Great City Schools, which you're a member of, and which you have turned to in the past, or used in the past and will use in the future, I'm sure. And we've also given you like districts in the state of Kansas. So based on that information, that's up to you, how you want to treat that, but we need a range. And we can't post it, we can't advertise it. You can't, I mean, and internal has to be the same as external.
Correct. Mr. Collins, we appreciate your time, we appreciate you, this primer that you've given us tonight. Sean, did you want to conclude on the compensation picture at all, or, okay. This, Cheryl?
I just have one question before we move into the salary, if I may. Because in Kansas, you stated, we do not have a, sir, Mr. Collins? I have a question. You stated that we do not have a superintendent certification in Kansas, and that is absolutely true. But we do have a district-level certification, which is over and above an administrative credential. So we would need to make sure that they had that district-level certification.
Absolutely, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we were.
No, thank you, and that I missed, Cheryl, so forgive me, yes. You do have that, and keep in mind that we always look to state law and board policy simultaneously and with equal weight. So, sorry I missed that.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
If I may, and I think part of the question would be, would a candidate be allowed to apply if they needed to obtain that certification? And so that's really the question of the board, or would that be a, you know, because again, you may have somebody who's applying from out of state, out of region. And I would suggest that you maintain that flexibility where they could apply, but then they, you know, the board could offer them a contract contingent upon them beginning that certification process.
I would be very comfortable personally in allowing that to be flexible, particularly if we go to an external search.
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for our speakers tonight? If not, I'd like to move to the portion of how we will advertise the pay for this position. And then we'll just, I'll just make the motion and see what the board wants to do with it. And then we'll have discussion and we'll vote on it. But just to get the process moving, I move that based off a market-driven rate analysis and comparison to regional salaries, both in the public and private industries, other school districts, still speaking of comparison, the job is advertised, when we get to the advertising portion of this search, that the base salary be in the range of $300,000 to $325,000.
I'll second.
The motion by Stan and seconded by Julie, and open for discussion. Cheryl? Oh, I'm sorry, Diane.
I am comfortable with that as our range. We will negotiate, obviously, once a contract happens. But that keeps us within what we know nationwide and in Kansas that superintendents are currently making.
Diane?
Yeah, I was just going to point out, like Cheryl did, that that is the normal range for large urban school districts that are comparable to Wichita.
And this was, and I'll just add on to that, and the reason why I made this motion is, it's also, we need to compare square footage that we have, the number of facilities we have, the number of employees we have, the number of students we have, what our neighbors are paying. And also, we included what people in similar responsibilities on the private sector are also making. Because I think you're going to see in the future, there is going to be far more interchanging between the private sector and the industries such as ourself, the public industries. So I think the comparison has been very market-driven, and so I think that's a very fair range. And obviously, we don't know how exactly we'll end up, but we know it'll probably be somewhere in that range. Ernestine?
Well, it also is important to recognize that we're one of the largest employers in this area, in the state of Kansas. And when you are leading such an organization, we want quality, and we do not want to try to shortchange ourselves by hiring just for the low end of the totem pole. So we want to make it so that it's a wide enough range that we can find the quality that Wichita deserves. Our students deserve, and our teachers deserve to have as a leader.
Thank you, Ernestine. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of that motion, does anyone need me to read that motion again? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Sean and Wendy, do you need anything from us tonight, other than the timetable and the compensation package, and the advertisement of the compensation package?
No, those are the only two items that we needed from the board tonight, so we will continue to. So we will continue to work with all of you and make sure that we adhere to the timeline as best as possible. I'm very aware that there can be some minor flexibilities or changes within that. So when that happens, we'll alert you to that effect. But it'll be up to Wendy and I now to move forward with Mr. Collins and Mr. Follies to make sure that we stay on track.
Thank you, Sean, appreciate that. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, executive session.
Julie?
I move the board recess into an executive session to discuss pending negotiations between the BOE and the United Teachers of Wichita pursuant to the employee-employer negotiations exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at, I have to look at my phone, 6:15.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Cheryl, moved by Julie to move into executive session. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Returning from executive session, no action taken or necess, needed. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, adjournment?
I move the board to adjourn the meeting.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Cheryl to adjourn. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 4-0. Stan Reeser, Julie Hedrick, Cheryl Logan, and Ernestine Crable. Thank you, see you on December 12th.